Okay, the meeting's live.
Welcome to the April seventh meeting of the Raleigh County Commission. Please stand and join in the budgling.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's our new audio visual.
Oh, that's.
That's where I'm.
I thought these guys come in through there. And.
Yay.
And I guess it's before public comment and I. I wanted to call an executive session for just the three of us, nobody else, your personnel.
Okay.
That's alright. You guys. But that whatever the last thing is.
Can you drop the language for him?
Uh, yes, yes, and commissioners, the other thing that I would be asking in public comment. Is, and I think it may be appropriate after that executive session. Um, I have an attorney client um relationship executive session that I would be asking for. Um, to occur after that. And it would be myself uh with Rich present and the board. That I'd be asking.
Now, is all this under your administrative time?
Yeah, it would just be, we we do that one first and then you could do.
He's saying.
He's already. He's at the end anyway.
That's right. Oh, is he? Okay. It all works.
So I'll make a motion and uh have two executive sessions for the reasons listed. Uh, at the end of uh the regular uh meeting today.
I second that.
They're moving second to add two executive sessions to the agenda on favor. Now, public comments?
I don't have a whole lot. Um, I'm aware I've had about a food poisoning last week. Yeah, I went to work Tuesday morning and at five and I left at seven and I was homesick for a day and a half. So it took me a couple of days to recover, but we're okay. I don't know what it was. I don't know how. I had to get the doctor on the line on video conference and we went through the symptoms and that's what we came up with, so. Yeah, so anyways, um fortunately, I didn't have a lot on the agenda, so I didn't fall behind thankfully, but. Friday afternoon, I did have a meeting with Jason Smith and Darren Selden uh over at the chamber to discuss a few items. Mainly centered around area growth expectations and rural economic development. Um, had a pretty good dialogue. Um, I think it led to some some productive ideas. Um, just have to continue to. Uh, discuss. Uh, over the weekend, it did um. Didn't do a whole lot, but uh went through uh some past budget numbers just to get better prepared for. The upcoming budgets right around the corner. Yep. And uh watched some basketball, both the national semifinal games. Wow.
Yeah.
Those were fun. Um, let's probably watch if Florida and Houston play tonight probably worthwhile and thinking. It's kind of contrasting, but it should be a pretty fun game.
Hope so. We don't end up like the women's.
I knew the women's game is gonna end up that way. I already knew that. Yeah, UConn's just too good.
They said, yeah, thanks for making us the two seed.
Yeah.
To beat three number.
Incentives.
They did. They beat three number ones back to back to back to get there. Yeah.
I'm sure that was a little fuel to their fire.
Oh, yeah. Especially when they beat one of the number ones, well, same number one seed pretty badly earlier in the year too, so. Sadly, though, K-State baseball team.
Oh, did they? I didn't hear.
Oh, they laid an egg.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. I don't know what happened. They lost seven nothing and ten to two yesterday. Played a doubleheader because they canceled on Saturday, but yeah.
Against who?
Oklahoma State.
Hmm.
In Stillwater.
No. It's incentive. I don't mind losing early.
Yeah. Oklahoma State's one of the better teams, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lady golfer won the amateur.
Yeah, I saw that. That was good. I saw that Sunday morning.
Yeah.
That was really.
Congratulations. Worked her as well. Yeah.
Very good.
It is this time of the year. Royals are in second place. I just say the break was good. I just said they were second place.
Enjoy it while you can.
So anyway, with that said, that's all I've got.
Okay, um, well, after a pretty busy week last week, Friday was relatively quiet. Um, except I did have an appointment with a neurosurgeon over at Stormont Vale. Um, it was at their facility in the research complex, which I hadn't been to before. Well. Yeah, and it was amazing. Uh, I was really, really uh impressed with where they have sent them. Patients to check in and all that. It's really amazing, so. Uh, doctor and assistant is very helpful and they're working on some alternatives. Um, weekend was fairly quiet, spent some time in the home office, working on bills and reviewing the agenda and documents for today's meeting. I don't know. Well, anyway, and then Sunday I played in the bell choir church and. And spent.
Yeah, Friday I had a busy morning. Sort of Wes Moffin and I had a law board orientation meeting. They invited them up by two uh the director Pete was out sick. It's one round. Was and deputy director, three mine, random meeting and. Finance manager and all the majors from all the the six divisions were there kind of going over. They outlined all the work in their divisions and. Uh, and then a good chunk of the meeting was going over the budget, budget history and projecting budgets forward. Uh, learned a lot of information and then after that we uh marked French gators that were. The jail belong to. I mean, we were, he really went into a lot of stuff. I've been down there before, but he really went into a lot of details of where where how things work and everything. It's. He's done a lot.
Oh, yeah.
He's really. Yep, got things working there. Um, and they're still full.
Yeah. I don't think that's a trend that's gonna change.
Um, then after that meeting had been long meeting with Diane, free health department, we went over how things are going in the department so far and. What plans she has going forward. And that. That's business.
Ready for business commissioners. First item we have is child abuse prevention month twenty twenty five proclamation.
I would make a motion to approve the child abuse prevention month twenty twenty five proclamation.
Um, I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve the child abuse prevention month uh twenty twenty five proclamation. All favor.
Alright. That changed. It used to be in February.
It was not?
Used to be in February. They moved it to April. Um. It's. They've been the blue pinwheels and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been February.
And saw various. Pinwheels got misplaced evidently. People have pulled them and moved them to different areas and stuff. It's like, I haven't seen that happen before.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. That'll be fun.
Yeah.
Also. You left Lynn Berry's thing. That's next Monday.
You know, it's next month. I left. I brought it over. You only told me once it was. They they just set it on my desk.
It's on.
It's next.
And that's why I gave it back.
Yeah.
No, we just, I wanted to have a chat, but I'm most I see this in the kitchen.
And it's misspelled.
Like, where is it spelled?
It's an evil name, her name.
Yes, it does.
Shouldn't.
If that doesn't.
Good catch. Uh, highway use permit. Uh, need a motion to approve highway use permit granting WTC permission. For cloud fiber object cable according to detail shown on the maps.
It's really hard to read those maps. And I finally figured out it was in tataracts.
Yeah, one part was tater. What looks like Rogers Edition Tataracts and then a little bit in the Somerton and we put it in tataracts.
Yeah, it was like. And they just kind of cut off tataracts right before it goes in the sun. Yeah, well, this is kind of weird.
Yeah.
Well, they don't exactly know what's happening in that intersection. Yes, so that probably doesn't make sense. Would be my guess. Um, okay. Without move to approve the highway use permit granting WTC permission uh to complete work as outlined in the permit application.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second to approve the highway use permit granting WTC permission. Complete work as outlined in the permit application. All in favor.
Alright.
Chair, please sign.
This is much clearer than it was on my home computer. It was a second.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
It never happens. Next commercial I rally K employee action forms Isaac Gonneal, new hire volunteer firefighter. Uh, Joy Dixon, new hire volunteer firefighter and Michelle Porchnar, uh promotion public works. Public health emergency preparedness. All briefly signed.
Response with the Russell's.
Yeah. Yeah.
With us.
Time to game start tonight.
About seven or eight.
Seven, eight's best my bedtime.
Yeah.
Yeah. Houston game lasted longer, but after eleven, wasn't it?
I can't stay.
Just last.
Why they do that?
I have a cousin, she's more like niece, but anyway, she lives in Houston and her significant other. Is big into commercial real estate from the Houston area and they were at the game. She sent me a little snap on my phone because I actually had Houston winning. On my bracket, you know, so.
You got a pretty good chance.
I was rooting for the big twelve all the way, you know, so. But she's a K-State grad and I can tell her she still look, she was all dressed in red. I said, you still look better in purple and she.
No, it's interesting to Harris County, which is Houston. And then yeah, incorporated area of Harris County has the largest. Actual population of unincorporated rural citizens in the.
Oh, really?
Country.
Did not do that. Did not.
Houston was.
Yeah.
Urban sprawl.
Any changes to minutes commissioners?
I didn't do anything.
I'll make a motion into approve the minutes as written from the um. April third meeting of the Raleigh County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved in second to approve the minutes of the April third meeting. The Raleigh County Commission that's presented. All favor.
No tentative agenda commissioners?
So do they have um on the joint city and county meeting, they have an agenda?
I don't know if there's any topics or not. It could get canceled.
Well, somebody. We had a, that was one, somebody wanted that topic, Gary.
Oh, yeah. That was late last year. I. Discussing the law board appointments.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
I don't know how to approach it. Does he give a presentation on it or? I kind of, I I kind of went through and. Talked to everybody about it and nobody seemed interested in it, so I I don't, I don't.
Well, on those agendas, it's if one of the governing boards bodies wants to discuss it, not an individual.
Right.
So if you guys want to, yeah, we can, or if the city wants to.
It might just be, I mean, if we're having, if we have a meeting or if it just bring it up, see what. What they think, I kind of what. He's got so many bring that up at the. I know. C P D and I forgot that for me. Just see what they thought.
That's a good conversation to have with Michael S B.
No.
The interesting statutes and legality behind it, so.
Any items for next week's press conference? Okay, we have Amanda Webb at nine o'clock. Once we get a break, you got some time.
Thank you.
We.
Eat that right. Need to try and catch all three of you sometime today.
Alright, I got an item too, so.
Both for me? Not so.
No, 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 no. I don't think that.
Did I sign it last? Notes.
That's so long. That's a good idea on that. Same name.
Did you see Mandler? With the email. This morning. That that Lynn and Jill winner cousins.
Yeah. You should. Well, yeah. Your popular guy. Yes, I guess.
It made me.
That's kind of what's here. I know, right?
Maybe I showered this morning.
The reason for not being here on Thursday. I was teaching.
I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Alright. This can't. This is not good. Don't deal with being bad. I went into drink bars.
Shannon ruptured.
Motion, yeah, motions. Uh, thank you. How are you doing, Diane?
Good, how are you?
Doing alright. I can't complain. I've got some good sleep over the weekend.
Awesome.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Well, I was ill just like you were. As everybody was.
Oh. Yeah, yeah. I think it was more function of me not being able to sleep for the.
Yeah.
Week. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, sometimes you just have to. Just do it.
Houston. Because she had the two.
They're scrappy. They just don't quit.
He's scrappy though.
He's.
He's, yeah, well, they're mature.
That's true.
You know, they've got upperclassmen is why I like them. I always like those teams.
I saw a chart and I haven't been able to find it since. And I think it was, it was his final eight, I think, was maybe sixteen. And said, the school, the the starting five, what school did they start out at? And all of them, there's, you know, a bunch of different ones. Houston was all Houston. And and Purdue and. Some maybe Duke, I don't know. Duke had one or two, but you know, they had the.
And that's what I was going to say. I said upperclassmen, but I meant upperclassmen that have stayed in the same school.
Yeah.
You know, and learn your system and build the chemistry.
Prior started out at Baylor, won a national championship there a few years ago. That's that's the one exception, but.
One, okay, yeah. I mean, yeah. But like I say, when they had to turn, you see Houston, Purdue and things and and the others. There weren't more than one person that started that.
And Darren, morning, Amanda.
And I got.
You got kids.
Good.
They said the portal this year and the first two days had a thousand kids.
That's crazy.
Isn't it?
That's crazy. It's just a professional sports. I was just gonna say it's about.
No, with no whole bars, there's no. There's nothing in place.
Yeah.
It's sad, in my opinion, anyway. I don't.
John, are you in remorse? There you're a little African Christian man.
Yeah. It's not so easy driving just up the street to get a tea to cook the work. I have to drive all the way across town, so it's not gonna work. We'll make it in. We'll find time to make it in there.
You say you've got to be their top customer. You can't.
I don't know about top customer, but.
Yeah, I just know you go there a lot.
It's kind of like. It's kind of bad how that kind of worked out over there. Ownership.
When you don't own the real estate.
Their house representatives.
I want that.
What does keep the blue?
The those. You don't want to get your own socks.
Yeah. This is half a dozen hairs maybe, no. Not to switch it up a bunch. Yeah.
Really, I need you. Did get my onions in in the mud just before the next low rain.
I did not.
I was gonna put some sweet potatoes in.
I I was glad I did when I saw it's warming up this week because onions, as you know, it don't take much for them to get going.
Yeah.
We got wild onions growing. In in a section where by my parking lot.
I don't know.
About this tall. I mean. And they're not really good, but it would kill you or anything.
Maybe that's.
There's. No, I.
I didn't know it's like it too.
I just know they're there and they're just like all, you know, their ass just starting to get green and these things are like.
If you try them.
They're half a foot. Oh, I think I did when I was a kid in Kentucky, but I mean, they're edible, but.
There's somewhere around my house that are.
Yeah, that's about.
Actually, it's.
I don't want to eat into it, man. It's time that. My dad used to tell a story that the one thing, one of the things that does not get broken down. Um, through any process at the waste treatment plant is uh tomato seeds. And so they had down in Park City, they had a whole bunch of tomato plants growing in their sludge field. Right? And it's like, I mean, they grow super well.
They're doing well out back there.
They're doing great now.
The man was this big.
Man, can you talk that?
Think I can.
Stomach is still hurt from last week and that didn't help.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll try. Um, good morning Commissioners, Amanda, planning director, Darren Hobbs, our planning compliance specialist is here too. We're gonna talk about short-term rentals, which is the most exciting topic. You know. Everything, so. Um, we've been talking about this um, for a few sessions now. We've had a few work sessions over the last couple of months, just to see about adding some different um, parameters into our current. Um, short-term rental regulations. So what I've done here, um, there's a couple items. That we about last time that you did want incorporated in, so I've put um, sample text into um. Our current S T Rs to see if you're comfortable with that. Of course, we can always, you know, mess with the language or whatever, but I wanted you to see where um, things would live. Um, and make sure you're okay with the language that we're using, so. Um, the first one, if you remember. Um, we talked last time about being current on property taxes, fees, everything having to do with that short-term rental property. Um, that was coming from um, Public Works had expressed a concern. Um, just with somebody not having paid their um, sewer bill, so just kind of wondering if we could kind of. You know, work, work that in um, to make sure that the S T R was current before we either license them or re-license them. Again, that's an easy enough thing to verify, just to call over to Public Works, making sure everybody's current. Um, so what I've done is. What you're seeing in your staff report is the language that we would add in. You also have what our current short-term rent, rental regulations are. So basically where I see this going is under licensing requirements, section three, just adding um, letter F. The owner of the property must be current on all applicable local, state and federal taxes and funding fees owed in connection with the short-term rent. So again, that would be under, excuse me, that would be under the licensing requirement section. Um, any thoughts on that language, any concern? We can go down to where that would fit in. So this is the licensing section, the licensing requirement section that's currently in our S T Rs, so would go under um, letter F. And we would just add um, you know, that language about them being current on taxes and fees, basically. That working out okay? Sounds okay. Perfect. So we got that one. We'll back up. The other one we talked about last time had to do with the responsible agents. Um, if you remember currently in our short-term rental regulations, we do require. Um, it, it can be the property owner themselves, or they can designate a responsible agent um, to. Take on that role for them. Basically, they have to um, be able to respond within an hour, and that was a lot of our conversation from last time, respond. We don't really necessarily. Uh, define what responding means, and the concern was. You know, sure, a text or a phone call obviously is a response, but we wanted somebody. More local, we wanted somebody who could actually show up at the S T R they needed to. So we added some language in here again, um. Everything you're seeing in A and B is what's existing. The um, what I have underlined is what I'm proposing to add. And there's kind of two parts there that we'll, we'll talk about. So what I'm proposing to add is the responsible agent must reside within Riley County while guests are in residence at the short-term rental. When I wrote this um, staff report, I had a little comment out to the side and it didn't, didn't make it over. I obviously didn't transfer it correctly. I wanted to know what you folks thought about while guests are in residence at the S T R. That is actual language I found in a sample code. Um. I don't find this one a whole lot. We don't necessarily have where people say responsible agent must be. Within X location or within X jurisdiction or that. And the one I found, and I wanted to just go ahead and put the whole thing in there, then we can talk about it. Um, are in residence at the S T R. So do we want this, do we want to have that in there? Um, you know, did people flexibility? Well, nobody's renting it this weekend, so I'm gonna go out of town. I mean, obviously, these are just added things that.
No, I think it's.
You know, for us to.
Expanse.
Look at.
Guess my question still is, is. Fine with it on the outset, but. If we find that there are guests at a short-term rental, no responsible agent, then what?
Yeah, and, and that was, that was my question.
Regulation, if you don't have. That's always been my point.
Yeah, that's why the conversations, just until we can get the state to. Get a little bit more local control on this. This one may not be such a battle, maybe, but. You know, if you've got somebody. We have somebody from like Alaska or something that owns one. Um, you know, how's that going to work and are they gonna realize, well, they don't, they can't really enforce it, so why do I have to do it?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, that was for a lot of things.
I know.
People realize unfortunately, not, and not just.
True. I'm finding more and more non, non-responsive people on that. Yes, one thing we might do, and I love, you know, like this is, this is good language for that.
Yeah, I agree.
We might say, instead of reside, be present. Right? And the reason why I'm thinking of is that since residency is a legal status. Right? Technically, somebody could argue. I've maintained my residency within Riley County. I was just gone. Over the weekend. Right? Do you know what I mean? And so if we say be present within, then there's no question. Right? That if I'm not here, right, or you could say must reside and be present within. Riley County, right? And so does that, does that make sense to me?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, now that I'm having to persecute. Great, I mean prosecute. Now. Now, now that I'm prosecuting, I'm thinking, oh crap, right? I'm thinking like a defense, I have to think like a defense attorney now, and I'm like, okay, let's make it clear. People gotta be present.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that a little bit.
Yeah.
So a responsible agent must be present within Riley County rather than reside. Is that what we're, I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
Or reside in.
Must reside and be present.
And be present. Yeah, yeah.
And do we want to leave the stipulation while guests are in residence at the S T R?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So just so I'm crystal clear, the responsible agent must reside and be present within Riley County while guests are in residence at the short-term, that's what we wanted to say. Okay. Fantastic. We can do that.
I should also give legal advice at this point. The reason why we can do this, right? And make a residency requirement, at least in my interpretation, is that the responsible agent does not have to be the owner. Okay?
Right.
If we did have it to have to be the owner, then we could get. Challenged under. I think it's the Commerce Clause. Of the Constitution. Right? But since we're, I mean, it's been a little bit since I was in, that was twenty years ago when I learned that law. But since, as long as the resident agent is, doesn't have to be the owner, we're good. Okay?
Yeah, and we already have that language in there that. They just do, of course, whether it's them or somebody else they designate, they just have to give us that information, so we have the contact information. We know who it is.
Good deal.
All of that, so. Okay, perfect. Um, so the next one, um. This is one that we've been looking at different examples, doing some different considerations. I brought a few. Honestly, they're kind of the same examples I've been bringing. It's hard to find um, good examples for, for this. This is, uh, we talked about maybe establishing setbacks, distances between. Properties containing short-term rental. Um, structures um, and or um, doing a density um, limitation, so. It's really just kind of dependent on. If you want to do both, you wanna do one or the other. I know last time we. Talked about, um, one of the big reasonings behind this is traffic, is parking, so if we had some space between them, especially in areas that are a little bit denser, that might be beneficial. Um, so probably our um, adding setbacks or distances would accomplish that. But again, there's ops, there's plenty of options if you wanna do both density and um. And setbacks. So again, I've included some examples of, of both. The density is a little bit tough for us because again, we are. Pretty rural. Um, again, we do have pockets of, of higher density. Um, a lot of the examples I'm finding, they're um, putting caps on like zip codes. That. Doesn't really work well for us. Um, we don't have like special uh, sub-areas or, or a little, you know, areas where, where more people would, you know, would maybe come to visit. So it's, it's a bit tricky for us to do a density limitation that makes sense, if, if that makes sense. Um, but again, I wanted to give you some examples of what I'm finding. Um, just a reminder, we don't have a ton of examples from Kansas counties. A lot of places don't have S T R regulations. They either. They kind of lump them, you know, maybe with the B and B or other kind of lodging unit, or they just do their conditional use um. Uh, process. They don't necessarily have specific. Um, S T R regulations, so I wasn't able to. Yeah, I wasn't able to pull, yeah, a whole bunch of examples from Kansas counties. I would have liked to, but. They're just not there, so probably they'll use ours as an example when, you know, they're, they're, you know, maybe gonna do some of themselves, so. I just want you to know why I don't have a whole bunch of Kansas County examples here. It's not because I disregarded them. They don't really exist, so. And again, I have a couple um. Couple cities, which I know. Or did, I was really just trying to find examples to, to provide to you folks, and then a couple from, from Washington, because I'm familiar with that. So. Something I was thinking about is, if we wanna open G I S here. As we were talking about. What different setbacks or distances would look like. Um, and I'm just kind of scrolling in to. I just picked denser area. So let's see, I should just do this with my. So I found examples. There's one that's two hundred feet, there's one that five hundred feet, and there's one that is a thousand feet. So just kind of looking at um. You know, what some of those distances are. So if we have this property here, I'm just, and I'm just picking. I don't know if this person's an S T R, I have no clue. I'm just picking, just to give example. So we use this property and let's take from the edge. Two hundred gets us just about one property over. You know, kind of one property all around. Um, five hundred. Now we're of course getting a little bit further off. You know, so it would be five hundred in all directions from property to property, so property line basically over. So you're kind of seeing, I'm not able to keep that very well, five hundred, but you're kind of able to see. You know, what that kind of radius, if you will, would look like. And then again, I found one that's a thousand. And so. Yeah. It's really just kind of dependent on. You know, again, how, how far apart you want to get. And still, if you even want to, you know, there's, there's no. Of course, nothing's saying we have to do it this way. I'm just gonna pull and find another. Little area. Yeah, I can. I'll go over here. So just to, just trying to go to some of the denser areas that we have, just so you can kind of see. You know, visually on that, what that. Like, so.
Does the city of Manhattan have anything like that, distance limitations?
Um, I did not look at the city of Manhattan, honestly, um, because I didn't really wanna look at cities that were too big. I, cause I'm trying to kind of.
I just think it's really relevant, but since it is. The community here.
Yeah.
But the other thing is too, is. How does the real estate professionals and everyone? Get that out to people when they're buying properties, understand that ultimately it's. Their responsibility, but it's kind of like the noise, noise use zones and other things that we come up with is. How are buyers aware of this? Because they may go with you. Attempting a property for a short term, then they find out they're. After they have their first violation, that there's one next door, it just seems like it'd be hard to. Educate.
Yeah.
All buyers.
And, and that's, I mean, that's honestly a big problem with a lot of the things we do in planning, honestly, you know, getting, getting the word out to people that there are regulations, and, and I'm not just talking about short-term rental regulations. I mean, there are. You know, we have zoning, we have building permit requirements, we have, you know, we have regulations on the books for a wide variety of things, and. I think a lot of people. Through no real fault of their own, don't always know that. And it's not until we, they get our friendly letter, hey. By the way, you know, you need a permit, or you need this, or you need that. Um, we do have to rely a little bit on. You know, a little bit of word of mouth, um, you know. I do always encourage people to call us first before they buy property, um, or before they do anything, call us first, so they can make sure they. Get. You know, the, the full story. Um, but yeah, that's, that's definitely an issue.
I think I've asked this before, but I don't remember the answer, but do we? Have a problem with that currently with short-term rentals being next to each other?
Um, we don't have that a whole lot. We do have a couple that are like across the street from each other. We have a couple situations that are more denser areas. Um, but it's, it's not really something that's a huge problem for us, because again, we are mostly rural. Um, we do have a couple that are, that are in close proximity. You know, in our more, in our more dense areas.
Well, it's like, you know, see across the street in one of these subdivisions, how far would that be?
Um.
From one resident, it's from the residence to. Or.
Yeah, so. Leave these two.
Two hundred. Feets about one property over and five hundred.
This one, this one are, are short-term rentals, and yeah, that's just like right across. So. It's not even a hundred feet. So. Yeah.
So. But if you go to the other one up there in the corner, that'd be further.
Yeah.
And I do understand the issue with that, because they just, I have a big family and my whole family shows up at a short-term rental, and then there's one across the street and another large family, and that. What it does to parking and congest.
Yeah.
Even if they're not rowdy groups, just that, I mean.
It's been judged.
But what usually brings up the bigger concerns are the rowdy groups.
Right.
But just what you can do to that neighborhood environment with. My family, five cars showing up and taking up all the parking in the area, because a house probably doesn't have enough parking for that, taking up the street, so I understand the issues.
Yeah, and we only have minimum parking onsite parking requirements, but once they meet that, after that, it's, it's a public street, of course. Like, street, but yeah. It couldn't not take much to, to kind of fill the road pretty quick, so.
We'll say, look, I said City Fairway, it sounds beat, but. It's not even that big, but I looked at, Fairview, there's a town north of it, it's Fairview.
They put the wrong thing in there.
No, no, you said Fairway, which is the one in Kansas, which is in Johnson County, yeah, all that. Personally. That, it's the size of like, Leonardville. You can't get a thousand feet away from your house in there.
One in the entire town.
When I looked up, that was. Spare View was the town I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I was just looking for any code I could find that had examples of, of distances, so.
I just, I, I'm more comfortable with leaving it at the moment, to be honest with you. I'd like to see the state loosen up some restrictions that are. I just think that that's, we're gonna run into an enforcement issue there at some point in time. What's gonna happen, I. It's just.
Like I said, to me, in the distance.
Trying to think of. I don't. I don't know that there's one next to each other, but I don't know that for sure either.
Five hundred at least, like I say, get some room to get some of the.
Get some of the parking, yeah.
Like Greg said, I mean, you have these rules and regulations because ninety, ninety-five percent are gonna buy. But they're aware, and it's just for those violators, and then you have something to. Unfortunately, with these, since we have no laws about it, to. Hopefully. Get them to go online, but a lot of times those people aren't going to anyways. If, if they find out you don't have any laws behind it, back it up. Totally taken the board over it.
They've already countered that.
Yeah.
I just looked up the. What Manhattan has. And I think it's. I think it can be permitted. I'm not. I'm not seeing that there's a. That there's a. A, a distance requirement. Between the two. I think it's just that it has to be. Um, no more than one family that it's offered to. Um. And it has to go through whatever the licensure requirements are for, uh, with the city and the state. So there may be other stuff, that's just what's in their zoning code. When I do a very quick search, that's helpful. When I do a very quick search, that's helpful. I can in the city.
Yeah, but.
I don't know that they do. I don't know that they've had to, cause I don't.
Because with their.
I haven't, I don't know that they haven't either, but I, I. Haven't heard that they have, so. I'd be interested in too, I guess.
Why, I like the idea of putting some sort of limitation in it on it, um. Things that I'm looking at and then I'll follow the rules. I'm okay with five hundred feet, but.
Because we have to grandfather, you know, any of that are. Existing, we have to be grandfathered, we have to.
Yeah, it would just be once that code is adopted, it's moving forward with any new.
Awesome new, everybody's trying to figure it out.
Yeah. For sure.
Five hundred sounds. But look, and I appreciate you doing that, you know, you can see.
Yeah, I, when I was writing this, I was like, okay, maybe I could do some screenshots, and then I thought, well, let's just look at the G I S lives.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably the easiest way to do it, so.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with it still, so I guess I'll have to do it by motion.
So, um.
So that, that there isn't consensus on putting a limit in there.
We need to put a motion for it. Which ones we're gonna add in, right?
Well, she'll bring it back in final form for you to approve, and so right now, the direction the staff would be not to put anything in there if there's not a. Consensus to do so. I don't, I don't know that you need to vote on every change. Right now, this isn't gonna be in final form, I don't believe.
Right, correct, so basically what'll happen next is, well, as as Rich said, we'll kind of build it into a um, a proper notice. And then it has to go to the planning board for their review and recommendation to you folks, so we have a few other changes we need to make with the um. Overall land development regulations, so we're gonna take it through that process, and then it'll come back to you folks for final review and decision and formal. Motion, so. Um, so again, I did hear for the first two options, we'll add the um taxes and fees, and we'll add the um. Information that the responsible agent, and again, I just wanna make sure I'm super clear. We, at this point, we don't wanna go forward with adding any distance.
How about two?
Two hundred, that's only at one property out there. The properties are two hundred.
Yeah, but this isn't gonna cover either one of those at the moment, we're gonna grandfather that one anyways, so. I just think we're limiting.
Just because of the traffic, cause that's one of the.
I agree with you on the traffic.
Besides the disruptive people, just the traffic.
What, what is our, what is our onsite parking, is it four?
It's one per, per bedroom.
One per bed.
And if, if it makes any difference, that one that she told you that was across the street from each other. Um, so, one of them's not an S T R.
What's up?
That sixty-foot one that she showed, that that's not an S T R, so you still have. Just that one. There, when I called this out.
Okay.
Apologies, I misunderstood, I misunderstood. Thank you. So just to see again, I know it's kind of like you see on the screen, but there's like two hundred there, so it just depends on the neighborhood, how many properties. That might, um, there's three hundred. We're, if we're negotiating, just wanted to show it to you, so. About four hundred. Just screen, so obviously depending on the neighborhood, it's gonna, you know, do it a little differently, so that's slightly.
I, I believe the parking issue could be an issue down the road, so, um. We'll do the five hundred.
Alright, so I get all three of those changes added in, and then go through the processes I was just describing. Again, we have some other information that we need to update in our L D R, so this will be weaved in. Take to the planning board, then it'll come back to you first, it'll probably be a couple month process, honestly, it just takes a little bit of time to go through all the steps, but. So it will come back to you for formal motion, and if there's anything else you wanted to talk about, I think I covered everything.
I do, not on the, but. Um, under that same heading, uh, number three, you're talking about sexually oriented business, businesses. And I don't know why we have to dress that, or I don't, you know. Says one per structure, and I, I'm a little concerned about that.
I'm sorry, can you tell me what your.
Okay, it's under, it's in that same section, number um, two section. You know, I, uh, and then number three, it says one per structure. It says it shall be unlawful for any person to operate or cause to be operated more than one sexually oriented business in any building structure or portion there. And that's right before the shooting range. I'm just wondering why we have that.
Oh, so this, so this is all our current. Uh, this is all our current L E R, that's just, th- this has nothing to do with short-term rentals, it's, it's a different section, I just. No, that's, that's a good question, I, I'm glad you asked, it's just, it's a totally different section, has nothing to do with short-term rentals, it just happens to be on the same page where. Where the short-term rental language starts in the code.
Well, yeah, it was under nine, nine B, where we had nine A, and I, I, you know, it's like. Short-term rental regulations is under that.
Yeah, no, again, I'm, I'm glad you asked, cause that would be a.
The section above the short-term, the short-term rentals just happens to start on that same page.
So it's like, dear, did we accidentally like mix up our, our language or something? Yeah, yeah, no, it just happens to share a page.
Okay.
Yep, alright, so, anything else with short-term rentals that you wanna talk about? Alright. Thank you very much.
Hello, Mark French, uh, Riley County Police Department. Uh, this is your monthly update on your jail facility, um. Commissioner McKinley got a tour, was that Thursday? Right, Friday. We were at a hundred and twenty, and this morning when I woke up, we're at a hundred and thirty-one. We had to shift, uh, so we are housing strictly due. To the facility needs, we have relocated four inmates. I do appreciate the tour very much, I think it's a good way to stay up to the speed, and it also seems what you've approved, you know, why it's making a difference in the jail. Uh, staffing wise. Uh, we're about five C O S short right now, but we are in the middle of a hiring process, we hope to be fully staffed. Uh, hopefully within the next month or two. Uh, same issues with, uh, patrol side, uh, down a little bit, but they have a hiring process going on right now. Otherwise, we don't have much to report, if you have any questions or concern.
Lots of concerns, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve them here.
You gotta quit asking the question why, because I cannot give you. Uh, but very subjective, sure. Thanks very much. First one we've got is the health, or the child abuse prevention. Whereas every family and child is filled with tremendous promise, and we all have a collective responsibility to prevent adverse childhood experiences. Foster the potential of every child and promote positive childhood experiences. And whereas positive childhood experiences such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships. Play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse, adverse. Childhood experiences, and whereas families who receive the support they need. Before a crisis occurs are very equipped to provide a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment. Leading children who are safer, healthier, healthier, and more hopeful about their futures. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, can have long-term. Psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime. And impact future generations. And whereas primary prevention of child abuse and neglect can reduce a lifetime economic burden associated with child maltreatment. And whereas strengthening families through access to concrete. E- economic, social, and community-based supports reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect. And ensures children have a foundation for lifelong well-being. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse. And contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas investments in prevention initiatives such as home visiting programs. Family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention efforts. Are essential to build safer, healthier communities for children. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Riley County, Kansas, due for playing April twenty twenty-five. As Child Abuse Prevention Month in Riley County.
One, two, three, one more, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Uh, now we got some service awards that K A C gives out. Um, we got some eight years last time, we had a lot longer ones. This year, or this time, uh, Susan Bryan.
Yeah.
You get to stand up. In first part. Park Analyst in Riley County, sixteen years with, with the county. Alan, Alan Todd, Frazel. Also sixteen years. Sarah Darnell. Also sixteen years of service for Riley County, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know.
And you do get pins, eight, eight years didn't get them, they got pins with the numbers on it. Uh, Cory. Cory Meyer, I T G I S. Thank you. Uh, next is Robert Leonard.
He's all laid roads.
He's busy working, public works operator, also sixteen years, Riley County. Megan Lewis. Community Corrections. Uh, also sixteen years. We've got a few. Bob Isaac. I thought I saw you come in here, you're hiding. And community planner, um, twenty-four years. Let me ask questions last week, I sent him, gave him your name, I said, call. Now go jump even higher, Sherry Taylor, G I S. Forty years.
Bob and Cory, just a little bit, and everybody's gonna cheat their shoulders toward the center. So you're gonna have to take a step that way, there we go. Okay, and everybody look right here, we're gonna be several, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three, and left, good job. One, two, three, and left. Good job. Congratulations.
Let's see if you have a bit about race. Russell. Greg, you got time to meet?
Absolutely. Tell me and let me, uh, I can hand these out when we get. Yeah. Houston, hopefully. I think so. They're just too scrappy. They just don't quit. They've got some lots and lots of experience, particularly at the guard play. I'm just going for a big twelve to be honest with you. That makes us just think about the S E C. I just think it'd be great to knock them off.
Do you think many people had them in their bracket? Do you think many people had them?
I had them in mind. Yeah, I did. And I picked the final four exact, so I it was all the other games that screwed that up though, so. National championship. It's all right. Nebraska's never actually won an N C A game, so.
To be fair.
They're a volleyball school. It's okay.
Hey, volleyball is a close sport.
Yeah.
I mean, the women's basketball team here might have a interest in you next year.
Yeah, I took a hit in the portal. Oh.
Man, they have a single starting player from this year to turn.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Wow. They got two top forty players coming in, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of them are starters.
Uh, well, one didn't, but they, they're.
Well, three of them, three of them were seniors.
Yeah.
So they're, they were done anyway. And then the other two.
Wasn't there one that they're trying to decide if she has eligibility?
Yeah, point next. There may still have another year of eligibility left with the whole COVID thing and injury, but and, um, yeah. Walker's a big loss. She was good defensively. I don't know what the deal was there.
Yeah, there's gotta be something, right? I mean, that is. Maybe it's only.
I think on the women's side, that's a bigger deal right now, if you think about it.
Well, the thing I would imagine is always so hard. You just don't know, injuries and whatever else. You know what you're doing right now. But you don't know in your wish.
So they're on school number four. So. Think of it as you will.
I don't know. It's a lot of pressure on, on athletes.
Glenn, that's the other one that's, was a senior.
How much did the ball take the time for to fill up?
Yeah, depends on what seats.
Wildly.
G A seats usually for conference games are about forty to sixty bucks. I remember when they were fifteen. I remember getting in there. I remember when they were free, actually.
When I was in Arkansas, we were looking at doing all of the games there. I mean, their prices were upwards of a hundred, two hundred bucks.
Uh, it'll be several games. In that round too, yeah. We play Army here this year on conference. That'd be a fun one.
Yeah, you should have plenty of I guess Army folks probably in there.
Well, they're, they're gonna coordinate Fort Riley Day with that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
That'll be like it. Tickets. A lot of that stuff.
Yeah.
The only problem is that's early September, so it could be eight thousand degrees outside. Yeah, uh, you not normally the first couple of weeks of September.
Well, I was born on the ninth and a wizard.
That's going on the sixteenth. I don't remember. It was a Friday.
I don't remember it either, but I hear stories. Yeah, shouldn't be much of a game though.
I don't know. Uh, you know, Army plays that wishbone formation. It's hard to defend. I mean, if you look at the disparaging in talent, yeah, but that's a, that's a tough offense to defend.
It's an interesting perspective.
They've been kind of topsy-turvy of the last few years too, so.
You have an executive session?
Two. We're gonna have two at the end.
Okay. All right. I gotta be here anyway.
Yeah.
This would have been started missing.
I think it's during Bryant's time, definitely.
Yeah.
So you do much Saturday.
Sorry for your neck, cause I, uh, we finally got our, our place for doing it too. But it's a slight, there's some of the, I guess.
You can, and ones like they kind of mess like the used to door, you know, that I've seen in like armor story. It's a panel. It just fits into the slider and it's an outdoor, which I mean, you don't have to do it. There's no construction.
That's good.
It's just a thing. And I think you can still use your your slider.
And since somebody would have to.
We didn't have a slider.
Yeah, you, you, it sounds like you're at least done or are you done with that?
Well, that was one portion of something to be, a portion to do.
Yeah, no kids.
Like I would sit on the bush.
Hey, that's the same time. They're taking care of it. So maybe it's not a bad.
They were just in the portion that they.
Yeah. So get in the house, maybe you just gotta pay them money. Uh, this only two.
Have them.
Nothing to tell. Bobby.
Everybody likes you anymore?
No. Can't blame them.
That sound good.
Yourself, obviously.
I've got, got teeth. I can say.
Oh, I think I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, we still.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask him.
Did you have a topic for county officials?
Uh, just the regular standing where we, we don't talk about, but I don't have anything.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, I think I sent that to you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll pull it up on my.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if it's not the timing, that's kind of just an always topic, particularly now with and, um, and budgets and personnel. I don't know how much it is to discuss.
Yeah, okay. But we will see.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I guess what I'm saying is I'm not asking you to schedule just for the time.
Yeah, yeah.
We've seen that other things.
Yeah, we'll share the, we'll share the other one we got too, which is surplus property. Always fun.
Yeah, it'd be interesting.
Yep. Thanks. Yeah, that, that title, that mean, and it was all guys, you know, I was, I might have been the unanimous one there, fat older and so she got an airfold from multiple. How's Russell?
Not too bad yourself?
I'm all right. Good weekend?
Good moisture helps.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. If I can just get that right wind to just burn that last very small section that I got. And there was a lot burned yesterday.
Yeah. At one time there were thirty-four prescribed burns.
Oh, really?
Prescribed, not out of control, prescribed.
Yeah.
I think there were two, um.
Just got out. My son was trying to get me to go out at seven thirty last night after he happened to walk out. Think the wind was just right, which it was calm, but it wasn't just right. It was north after I had my shower in my shorts and shutting down for the weekend. I didn't move. So we didn't burn.
That's interesting. That's only two that out of, out of the thirty four from yesterday.
Which shows.
Most people know what they're. Nope, they're not. It's, it's the new ones. What you set forth is the new people that have problems. The people are generally sort of.
Yeah.
Cause like we'd come in just after afternoon for something and heading back home in the middle of afternoons and you could see it all over the place. Up there, smoke coming out.
Right.
It's kind of cool to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, of the prescribed burns that are called in. It's a really low percentage, you know?
I know I had to go, we filed a station. They go, they were fishing when he got called out. But he wasn't on, I mean, I was, you know, then he leaves that radio on, you know, you know, I talked about that. So I was tracking that, telling all these stations where to go and went to New York.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
To call academics management.
And you know, you can tell, I don't know everybody's voice, but those are too, but it's easy to pull out. He was actively made it.
And you can tell it's right.
Yeah, and I mean, it was great. It was really good communication. They were clear.
Yep.
Anniversary, you got ahead and looked. I was there, there you. We got Officer Melvin and then a couple of Manhattan guys, things up there on there. I didn't realize they were.
Yep.
Have any at home that you burn?
Yeah, I, I was, went home this weekend and, and we burned about four. Well, about five hundred acres.
That's a lot.
Got a couple hundred more I'd like to burn, but I'm gonna get that.
Be at home with the right wind at the right time.
Station one, very marked, six, six, two, nine, three, put it down. Powerful.
Well, that'll be a new. Well, that'll be a new one on the list next month.
Pre-pressing next month's report.
Right. Yeah, powerful.
All right.
Morning, Commissioner Russell, suit needed, uh, Riley County Emergency Management and County Fire. Uh, got my monthly staff time report. Don't have anything to out of the ordinary, you know. Couple of things, uh, as I talked to you before, uh, I was scheduled to go to. The IWCE conference. With FEMA to do a. Question and answer, question and answer panel. On our cybersecurity event that infected our public safety radio system. With all the government, uh. Fundings that got mixed, and so we didn't go to that. But L three Harris has put in to do a similar thing at the APCO conference. And I can't remember what APCO stands for, but it's a. Kind of the dispatcher radio conference. But, um, that one's not sponsored by FEMA. It includes a free conference, uh, registration to attend the conference. But it would, it would cost travel, and I've kind of got mixed feelings on. Whether, how much benefit, I mean, I think it would be benefit Riley County, but. I don't know, I'm mixed on it, um. I've been leaning on L three Harris to try and get them to pay for, you know, the travel and lodging. And so I was just, if they did, and I was, I would like to get the commission's feel on. What you think about travel and lodging to that? I mean, I, there'd be some benefit, but. I'm, I'm mixed. So. It's in Baltimore.
What's, what is APCO, I mean, what is?
It's, it's like the dispatcher's conference, and so radio systems, nine one one dispatchers. Um, it's, it's that kind of conference. So, you know, the nine one one administrator, I mean, it would be appropriate for me to go, and there would be good things there and. But it's not something that I normally attend, but the registration is included since I would be considered a presenter. So I, I just thought I'd get your, your feeling, and if L three Harris. If I can't twist their arm enough to pay for it, what, what the commission's thoughts would be.
I'll just give us a break, don't know how much would our several costs would be from there.
So you can think about it.
Especially if you're presenting.
Pardon?
You said you're presenting, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, um. Obviously, the other thing. Just, Commissioner McKinley and, and Rich have been setting in on is the meetings with BHS and the architects and. I don't know if you guys saw the email that just came this morning. And they sent an email and, and for the, the big thing that they've just brought up, that hasn't been. Brought up until the last two or three meetings is the storm shelter part. And the extra that, that predict their forecasting that to cost, and it's. Crazy, I think, uh, the, uh. What they proposed as far as the, uh. So what currently has been proposed is just to go on the backside of the building, basically dig a little basement, if you will. And pour concrete storm shelter and call a good, or go into one of the offices and fortify it. And they, the way I read it, I don't know if you pulled it up, Greg, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, about a hundred and eighty to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for either option, which just seems. Astronomical to me for, I didn't look at the major ones, twelve by twelve.
Twelve by sixteen.
Twelve by sixteen.
Is it for employees to go in?
Yeah.
Why can't they go across, you know, to the EMS?
Well, it's, so it's for the employees that are working the store. So.
People to be there.
So they have store, they have. Facilities in the storm shelter to work the store.
Well, the storm shelter would be right, right around the door from the, so, so basically, when we're sitting there with our. Uh, button, finger on the button for the outdoor warning sirens, the tornado sirens. You know. It keeps us at that button longer than if we, you know, so if we had to go across the street, we'd have to leave, you know, in theory, twenty minutes. Before the storm hits, so we could get over there safely and everything. And so you would have, you know, a half hour, forty five minutes of. In theory, nobody at the button. So, I, I don't know, where do we go from there, I mean, we kind of.
No, go ahead, finish.
I mean. We, we have to do something, but a hundred and eighty to two hundred and eighty just seems like an awful lot for no more than what we're actually getting.
Right, so keep doing that. Yeah. Didn't they originally also throw out like a. Like, better word, a modular unit originally, wasn't that their proposal originally, that seemed very inexpensive compared to that, but they thought this. Other more permanent might not be that much more, so that's kind of why they went down that road, so maybe that's still an option. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I was in that conversation, but maybe they did, I don't know.
Well, they talked about a mod, but that was going to be to set it in the back of one of the other bays. So, you know. Yeah, I don't know, they couldn't do it on the back side of the building too, and they'd go away on it, but I don't know. And maybe it's not. Maybe it's not made to cover though. You know, it's. Yeah. Maybe it's not built to, to be buried. Because you know. Cost are just unreal. Yeah.
So obviously, we're gonna have to keep, uh. Working our way through that and trying to figure out what the best option is, but, I mean, we have to do something. But I'm not convinced it has to be four million dollars.
And just so the other two commissioners know at that price level, this is just a room that sits empty all the time, hopefully.
Right.
For nothing else, that's all it's for, is just to run out in there, be sure you don't get struck by a tornado.
Hmm.
And you can't store things in it, it's that piece of purpose.
Right. And then, and so that's what makes it hard to put it inside the building, because you're taking away space. And, you know, I know the mantra's kind of been built for the future, well, this one. We're building okay for the future, but we're not built, there's no room for expansion here, really, as far as there's no extra office, there's nothing like that. We're gonna, when we move in, it's gonna be full.
I wonder.
Or comfortable, but full.
When they put. I'm gonna say you're full now, and you're not comfortable. Wonder if you could put on, on the patio out there on the. East side.
Oh, yeah.
There.
Yeah.
That might be an idea.
That might.
You know, I mean, we may have to propose that. Next week.
Uh, it, it'd be an email Catherine that just. Board.
Oh, okay.
But you know, with the, because there's.
Yeah, I know.
Taking part of that to expand the building there, but there's still gonna be some there that they could set, those freaks have things that they're.
Yeah.
Wouldn't take up.
Yeah.
Your room, and wouldn't be unattractive, because you can't see it, it's.
And it wouldn't take excavation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
When we get the side.
Um. Uh, like I said, it's, uh, we are in the grass season, luckily, we've been getting some good moisture. Uh, so it's, you know, kind of kept things at bay and, and we've been having calls, like I mentioned, they're previously, uh. At one time yesterday, we had thirty four prescribed burns going at one time, uh, only two, uh, were called, we got calls on, so. That's good, and you know, really. Like Elizabeth pointed out, that's a pretty good percentage, and, and that's pretty typical for us, uh, you know, the majority of our. Uh, permit holders and, and people doing prescribed burns, like Commissioner McKinley mentioned, they know what they're doing, they've done this before. It, it's really a small percentage, the problem is, that small percentage can cause a lot of trouble.
And get out of.
Really fast. But luckily, with the moisture conditions we've had, and the pretty reasonable winds conditions we've had, we haven't had. The big one yet this year, so hopefully we can, uh, stay away from the big one like we've been having and. Be a little more normal this year, so. Uh, we did have several trucks with some minor breakdowns yesterday. One, uh, I believe ran into a big rock hiding in the grass and. Did a little damage to a front spring and, and, uh. Another one, uh, another rock was sticking up and. Busted off a tool line, I think, so it lost the tool, but then the damage done, so that's good, so. Doug was supposed to be at the training in Wamigo today, he's working on trucks. But, uh. I think that's probably the biggest thing, the new, uh, the new trucks that we've, uh, got serviced, they've, uh, been working out well. Unfortunately, one of those is one that has the tool line that apparently hangs down a little lower than the box, and so that's one of the things. Doug is going to work on is fix that and, and put on some sort of a skip plate, protect on that track, so. Uh. I don't know if you have any questions, uh, for me, otherwise we'll go into my. Uh, personal request, you have any questions for me, uh, report wise? I don't know. Think that, I assume that's why I'm here. So as you know, uh. Our, uh, administrative assistant has gotten offered the position of the. Step coordinator, and so I would like permission to fill that position. It's obviously a vital position to our department, um. It's primarily fire, um, it's, it's funded out of fire, but it does provide assistance to emergency management. Answering the phone, um, like clerical work for emergency management, but it does, it's really heavy lifting on the fire side. It's really one of our first contacts to. Volunteer candidates and new hires, it's the position that, uh. Guides the, the new volunteers through the hiring process. And, uh, you know, does things like issue on their gear when they come in and, and works closely with HR, uh, doing the, the hiring process with the volunteers. Along with providing the, you know, typical administrative assistant, uh. Jobs for myself, all, uh, Jake and all that, and so, um, it's budgeted for, there won't be any, uh. Unknown or new, uh, fiscal impact. Uh, and I would like to recommend you, uh, give us permission to initiate the hiring process.
So we just make sure it's clear that you would like to hire for two, like what permission to hire for one and that.
Sure. Yeah, it's currently an administrative two position, uh, hopefully we can get somebody qualified to hire at that level. Uh, but if we can, then we would like permission to offer administrative one, if we can't find somebody with the right qualifications to hire a two.
You know, this, um. Pay grade, you've got the range seven, is that for the one or the two?
Yeah, that's the two.
That's the two, yeah. We requested the highest amount that we expect offered, so that if there were a change, it would be less than that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the hiring process to fill the position of administrative assistant two, or possibly one. For the Riley County Fire District number one.
I would second that.
And moved and seconded to approve, uh, initiating hiring process, fill administrative position as a one or two, depending on available candidates. Riley County Fire District one. All favor. I'll repeat, thanks.
Any other questions for new commissioners? Alright, thanks.
Thanks, Russell. Greg, did you have an idea how much time you wanted in your first executive session? Thirty, but.
Ooh, three.
Yeah, let's see, thirty. Thirty, okay. Probably twenty would be enough, but I hate to. Yeah. Go back and forth. If it's not enough, you can go back in. Yeah.
Ten forty five, you know?
Yep. Uh huh, ten forty five. You didn't have anything other than these.
These two, oh, in my time, no, except to report that it was fun teaching at the clerks conference. Great, but that's where I was on Thursday, that's why I couldn't be with you all.
I'm moving to the county commissioners and chairman McKinley, vice chair Fokie and commissioner Ford. Recess into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. For the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee. The open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at ten forty five A M.
Second. The mood and seconded of county commission to recess in the executive session for reasons previously stated. Under performance matter of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor? Aye.
The meeting is live.
Okay, I can go ahead and move that the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
And move and second it for the board of county commissioners to come out of executive session, all in favor?
Alright. Also move the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I'll second that.
We move and second it, the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Yeah. How long do you need?
Thirty minutes. We could probably get it done in twenty minutes.
Well, I hadn't heard that yet.
No. So at eleven fifteen?
Yeah.
You wanna do this other way?
Go ahead.
Okay. Now here with the county commission including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Wilman Bokey and Commissioner Ford recess into executive session on potential litigation for the purpose of consultation with Brian Parfitt, county councilor, Attorney for the commission, Enrich Gargill, county clerk, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship, an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at eleven fifteen AM.
I'll second.
We move and second it for the county commission to recess into executive session for the reasons previously stated under the attorney client relationship exceptions to Kansas Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Mean slide.
Um, I would move the board of county commissioners come out at executive session.
Second.
The move in second, the board of county commissioners come out of executive session all in favor.
Aye. Also move that the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
Second.
The move in second, the record reflect no binding action was taken during executive session. All in favor.
Aye. I'll get it this time. I'll move the county commission including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford recess into executive session on potential litigation for the purpose of consultation with Bryant Parker, County Counselor, Attorney for District and Rich Fargo County Clerk, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act with the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at eleven thirty AM.
And second that?
The move in second to the county commission to recess in the executive session for the reasons previously stated under the attorney-client relationship exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I would move the Board of County Commissioners to come out of Executive Session.
Second.
The move in second, the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also move that the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
Second.
The move in second, the record reflect no binding action was taken during Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll get this time. I'm going to the County Commission, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, recess into Executive Session on potential litigation for the purpose of consultation with Bryant Parker, County Counselor, Attorney for Decision and Rich Fargo County Clerk, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act with the open meeting to resume in the County Commission Chamber at eleven thirty AM.
And second that?
The move in second to the County Commission recess into Executive Session for the reasons previously stated under the attorney-client relationship, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor?
Aye. The meeting is live.
Okay. I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session.
And second them?
The move in second, the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye.
Also move that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session.
I would second that.
The move that the record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye. Since I haven't had a chance to, you go.
Yes.
Oh yeah. No. You better start getting used to that too, huh? I don't have it.
I don't either. I would make a motion to adjourn the April seventh meeting of the Raleigh County Commissioners.
I'll say it.
The move in second to adjourn the, what is it, April seventh meeting?